Now there you go. Welcome to the Public Safety Committee meeting. Today is December 7th, 5:00 PM. This meeting be remote due to COVID-19 restrictions. We have a minute to approve. Take the motion for August 10th. And it's.
So moved and so moved.
We have a motion and a second any further discussion? And none, Consular Child?
Yes.
Consular Derby?
Yes.
And I will abstain, so motion pauses. Wait two, yes, no, no, one abstention. So now it's our public speak time. Is anyone here that want to say something is not part of the agenda? Now this is the time to, to, to talk. We have the agenda, sidewalk review, Southwood and Main Street. Other review committee request by owner, the 19 Womelco Way, review parking street and the criminal report from the fire department. If you're here to say something, there is no part of there. Yeah, now is the time to do it. Say none, let's start with business. I want to start with the sidewalk and I'm gonna ask Greg, he is here. Greg Nevin. What is the update with the South Street and the Main Street intersection?
So the ADA ramps are in and there's temporary paint down for the crosswalk across Main at South right now. Fortunately, it got too cold to put the final, the type of paint we use is the thermal plastic paint. It's called, it needs to be, I think it's above 55 degrees when they apply it for, in order for the manufacturer warranty to apply. So if it was, it's just got too, too late in the season to put down the final paint. So what's out there now is temporary and the final painting will happen in the spring. I can't get the contractor to promise anything, but it does sound like the rectangular rapid flashing beacon setup will be installed there by the, all I got out of them was the end of the calendar year. So I would like to say next week, but I'll take end of calendar year at this point. And you know, as part of the project too, we are putting a set of rectangular rapid flashing beacons at Main and Glendale. But those I don't think we're going to see to the spring just because of supply. They're just not available, but the same for Main and South, we've made that the priority.
So the question is because we're not 100% sure when they're going to install it. But the question is going to be, is going to install, we're going to install it before the kids go to the new school?
Yeah, yeah, well, the RFB, I do, I think it will begin by the end of the year there. And then the new side, the new sidewalk down the side of the variety store, all that work will start as soon as the frost clears in the spring. I mean, we've got Warner Brothers to commit to us being first on their list. And I, you know, hopefully by first or second week of April, they'll be back out there getting that, that sidewalk in and, you know, keeping the project moving along, so.
Perfect. Any consular have any question?
I'm just clarifying the sidewalk, they're going in in April, did you say?
Yeah, well, hopefully, I mean, depending on when, I mean, if, if, if in March, things are looking good and you know, you never know what the winter is going to do in New England. So it's kind of.
And soon.
Think they'll, they'll start as soon as they can.
Derby?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions, I guess. I saw the curbing for the sidewalk is already there, so. The, some confidence that it's going to go in as soon as they can get it in.
Yeah, they got the, they got the paint down. You can kind of see the outline of what, of the work that's going to happen there. It's just unfortunately, it just got too late in the season. The rain, you know, they had dealt with a lot of rain through the fall working out there, got as much done as they could, so.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
I will ask to the committee if we want to keep it on the agenda until the intersection improvement are done? Or you want to remove it without prejudice? Because we know what is going to happen there. And we will let the next chairman of the committee, Bobby Mink, I don't know who it's going to be, the next term to decide what to do, if they want to bring it back or, or just keep it out of the agenda. It's up to you, Consular Derby, because you bring, you bring it up.
I was gonna say, I'm fine to remove it. I think the only, I guess the only concern and the only reason why we would want to leave it on the agenda is I know that where the sidewalk starts, there's, there's a car that's been left there. That's, it's not a registered car, it's just kind of sitting there. And, and I think that that car interferes with the way that the snow removal gets pushed. So it kind of keeps the sidewalk from being fully cleared. And, and so we might want to just leave it on until we have our first real snowstorm and just see how that plays out, because that would technically fall under this topic. And we might want to just like, see what that looks like.
Perfect. I don't have any option about that, optional objection about that. Lindsay? You okay to leave it there in there? That's good, alright. Alright, let's move on. At the last meeting, Consular Derby and I, we start working in their ordinary review committee final report. We make some progress. And I have it in my notes here. We strike the, the language from the section 6.8. Let me open. One second. I'm looking for the ordinance so that way we can take a review. But we, we basically do what the report was asking is to strike the section 6, 6 slash 8, section 69, 69. And we still working at 376. And let me see ordinance right here. I'm going to show it this. Section 376. You guys can see that? Lindsay, can you? What exactly what we're looking for the 376? Can you refresh my memory because?
I believe that didn't think, I believe that the committee was questioning whether there should be a fine.
To eliminate this?
Yeah, to eliminate that. That, you know, different underage person, it's just, it was just, it just didn't seem like, it just seems like something that's not actually done. I don't think that they didn't really consider any fines that were actually given out. And it seems like this could be an education opportunity. I mean, could stop and cite them and, you know, to do other things. But I don't think they're actually, from what we heard from the police department, they're not actually giving out fines anyway, so. It just seems punitive when it should be kind of maybe a teachable moment.
Yes, and I, now that you mentioned that, I kind of remembered that there was a discussion on the ordinary review committee. And that was, used that more as educational opportunity for the person who's riding the bike without the helmet. Then being punished. I'm, I'm okay with it. I don't, I'm pretty sure that the police department never give a station to anyone in our city of all that. Consular Derby, any comment or opinion?
I, I don't necessarily have any issues with, and, and we talking about striking the whole thing, so it would take out the impounding someone's bike. Cause I don't think that's ever happened. I mean, I, I actually, I do think it's happened, but it was back in the 90s when like my friends were riding their BMX bikes down the middle of the street.
They're all Salem's friends. Um, I, yeah, um, I think the real issue was the fine, but I mean, maybe, I don't think, maybe we shouldn't make a recommendation until we can, maybe, maybe just leave it on our agenda and like get a little bit more input from the police department.
Okay.
Um, so yeah.
Cause that could be, I mean, like if, I'm thinking about a lot of people's bikes, at least like this day and age. We're not talking about impounding a hundred dollar thing. We're talking about impounding something that's worth thousands of dollars potentially, so.
Okay. I, yes, I will follow your recommendation, Lindsay. I'm going to keep it on the agenda. I will contact the, the police chief and, or the police department, I will say. And try to find a better language. The penalty will keep staying, same penalty, but probably the language will be more educational.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yeah. Sorry.
Wait, who's this?
It's Eli.
Eli Damon.
Eli, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not seeing the, the, yes.
Okay, so my, my impression as a cycling instructor and as someone who
Oh, thank you.
spends a lot of time observing cycling behavior is that most of the time when cyclists break the law, it's not because they're trying to get away with anything. It's because we don't do, we don't do cycling education in this country. And generally, they're, they're just trying to, they're, they're going by their intuition and they don't really understand how they fit into the, the system of, of, of traffic movements. And so I generally think that, that punishing them for doing something that they don't really understand why it's wrong doesn't work very well.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that too. And I don't even like the word penalties, like it just, I don't feel we need to be so punitive in our ordinances. I mean, well, we got into interesting conversation with the police department was about free helmets they give out and drives and like, I feel like in education, I feel like that should be the focus and not penalties. It's just, maybe we could strike this whole section, I don't know, let's, I, um, I guess you don't write education into your ordinances, but if they, um.
Yeah, I, but again, I will, I will keep it open. I'll go to the police department to see how we can work in a language. It will be proper and fit in this particular section pretty well.
I would, yeah, I would be for moving the word penalties altogether and.
Okay, I will recommend that when I talk to the police department to see if we can remove that, that word there. Alright, we, last time, Consular Derby and I, we vote 2 to 0 to remove section 68. I will go now there, we can take a look, but we already vote for it. Section 68. Right here. By the way, it was in 1965, the last time they're, they're approved it, so. I just want to let you know, Lindsay, that we, last meeting, Consular Derby and myself, we vote 2 to 0 to remove it, to strike the whole section 6.8. So that's, that is out.
Okay.
So we, so we removed that one too. That is from 1950. That was 2 to 0, we, we remove it too.
And the reason for removing that one was, remind me?
The section you guys, the police department know that the section 69 is also outdated and that the matter is no covered by, and that matter is now covered by legislation surrounding hunting licenses. That's why.
Okay.
We, that's what we got from the police department when we have the ordinary review committee. So basically, we can strike all the, all the section 69 because, because of that. Already covered, already covered in the hunting. Then we we start talking 615. Whoever else, the recommendation from the ordinary review, ordinary review committee, if the police department note that the lease ordinance subject to non-criminal disposition is not an exhaustive list and should be updated. They also know that the, the city fines for violation, the handicap parking ordinance is $50 opposed to 500 stay fees. So, and the end is we have to.
Yes, yes, we have to.
And that all, all of these have to be updated and I guess have to be too with the, with the police department. All of them. Because some of them, some of them say $50 and let me see, like by this one, say $50, the stay level is 500 and I'm pretty sure we can increase up to 300.
Yeah.
So we need to update all those, all those fees.
So what is the best way to, we don't like to talk to the police department. Also, yeah, I think what we found too is it was kind of, some were put there and some are, it's not exhaustive list. So it's weird to have a list, but it doesn't have everything. So it makes you feel like everything's there, but it's not, so.
Yep, that's another one, the, the police department, it's a conversation with them.
Yeah.
Consular Derby?
I think it makes sense to, to meet with a representative from the police to go through these.
Yeah. That was 8.485.
What was the section of that one that you just did for minutes?
6, 615. A485. So this one is one, the, the last meeting, Consular Derby and I, we, and, and that, we think that we should send it to the city solicitor to review it. And because could be, have bias in this ordinance. And, but we don't want to send it yet until we finish with all of them. In case we have to send something else, we don't want to spend, spend taxpayer money more than once. So that way we can send all, all, all at the same time together.
Yeah. Is it, is it, there's a lot of very specific laws from 1945. That seems like the town was in a very interesting place in 1945.
And the, the recommendation for the, from the ordinary review committee mentioned that section A4 and A5 is kind of redundant too. So probably we can work just in one, but, but that's what the report said. That concerned that it could be enforced with bias. These two are also redundant and could be combined.
Yeah.
But again, I, I think the best, the way that we can start is sending the language, the language again to the city solicitor. That way they, he can take a look.
Yeah. And just like, is it, is it really already needed? Maybe just disturbing people is more, I don't know. Like, it's kind of like thinking like, would this law be created today? Is this a needed law? Is this something that they use, an ordinance that we use? I think in our meeting, in that ordinance review meeting, I think the, I think the police staff, because I think Officer Sichy shared with us that just that week, a store owner had called because there was people standing on the sidewalk and it happened to be like two people of color who were just stand, walking down the sidewalk. So, I mean, it's just, yeah, there is an opportunity for bias there with people, who people think belong on the sidewalk and who doesn't belong on the sidewalk.
Salem, the, you, you, I think you born with ordinance in your blood. When you, when you, what are your recommendations? You think we can send this, when, when we finish with the, the whole work with the ordinance, send it to the city solicitor to see what kind of comments he made and then we can start working in a new language?
Yeah, I mean, so here's my, here's my initial thought, which is that this could potentially be used to, you know, impede free speech as it relates to protest. You know, it almost seems unconstitutional. So like, that's my, that's my first thought about this. I, I think it would make sense to, first of all, to check in, to see if there's any legitimate need for something like this. You know, if, if someone was obstruct, like if someone was just maliciously obstructing someone's place of, you know, work and it wasn't related to a free speech issue. You know, would we have the capability to, to manage that under the current laws and ordinances? But, um, so I, I think that's kind of the, the route that we might want to think about is like, A is a constitutional and B, is there a way that we could manage this if it was being, if someone was being malicious and trying to hurt someone's business in town by just like standing in front of their door?
And, and so how you recommend to do that? Send a, let's send a copy of this to the city solicitor with those questions?
Yep.
Okay.
I might, I might even, before we do that, maybe first just ask the police department, are these ordinances that they use? And like Salem said, do they have other ordinances at their disposal? If somebody's actually like harassing or, you know, really blocking someone's way into a store, there might be another ordinance that takes more sense to use. So, I mean, if the police department doesn't even use these, so it doesn't see need for them, we might not even need to send it to the city solicitor. But I guess it would be first to get their input of what they, what, if they're using.
Put this on the list with the, the other questions that we have, you know, like that.
Yeah.
What we're going to do after the meeting, are going to make a copy and paste of the sections or ordinance that we're working in and are going to send it to the police department, that way the, we can have an answer as soon as possible.
Maybe includes Officer Sichy, because he was on the committee with us.
So let's keep moving, now section 8. Article 3, Division 2.
We go back, because I haven't, I, I'm kind of upset that I can't throw a snowball.
Oh, here?
I mean, snowball fights are good fun, but no, I get it. Like, we don't want people throwing snowballs at cars and breaking windows and stuff, so that was a joke.
Yes. And maybe they're.
Snowball fight.
Yes. In a public way, so you can do it at your house.
Yeah. Can't throw it at your neighbor if he's standing in the street.
Yes. Section 8, Article 3. Article 3, Division 2. There you go. Lindsay, you want to take this?
Yeah, um, we have the letter, right, that was written to us.
Oh, I don't have it with me.
It was attached. Well, I actually want to just introduce Eli and whoever else wants to speak on it. But I just, this, this issue came up and we were talking, I just want to talk about how it came up in the ordinance review committee is we, our focus was more on, is this unfair to people? Cause it required, you know, people might have to get, have to shovel and they might, you know, be disabled or, or not, for whatever reason, not have the physical capacity to shovel their walk. And then when we got the letter from the Commission on Disability, it really helped open our eyes to the fact that the bigger problem is how it's blocking people's way and access to our city and how, without even thinking about it, this is just a perfect example, actually, I love this example of how ordinances are written lacking with a certain bias towards able-bodied people, also people who drive. And actually, a couple of years ago, I read a, I think I heard a podcast or something and it was about gender inequity and how a town in Sweden, and I just kind of want to read this, because I think it resonates with what we're having out here, is when the people in Karlskogas, Sweden became concerned with gender discrimination, one topic was snow removal. Surprise they found inequity. Think snow removal and the roads first come to mind. Do you clear the major arteries and then the side streets? Pedestrian walkways and bike paths are less. But the data indicate that women are more likely to walk and use public transportation. Meanwhile, the men tend to drive to and from work. When women are in the car, they trip chain, they take the children to school, they care for an elderly parent, they go to work. They do not use the major transport arteries. And yet the major arteries get the first snow removal, while the walkers, more female than male, slip, slide and get injured. One Swedish city reported that women experienced 69% of the injuries that occurred during winter with two-thirds of those individuals slipping on ice or snow. So I just remember I heard that snow, that like a podcast about that a couple of years ago. And, and then when the Commission on Disability wrote their letter, I was like, this is just a perfect example how we, it's easy to look at something that seems basic through one lens. So I just, I'm really welcoming this conversation and seeing how we can look at it through a wider lens. So I'm going to let members from the public that came to speak, speak to this.
Hi, yeah, so thank you very much, Lindsay. Yeah, so I think the letter says almost everything, but, but yeah, like the basic idea is well, yeah. So there, there, there are a lot of people that have, you know, have some need for the sidewalks, to be clear, whether they be disabled or, you know, just like, just have a, some unsteadiness on their feet or, or even, or even fully abled people can make, will make a false step every now and then. And the system we have now was basically designed to not, to, to fail, right? There's no way with like tracking down every individual resident or property owner and getting them to shovel their sidewalk is ever going to make all the sidewalks, all the sidewalks clear. And if there's one section that's not clear, then the entire route is unusable for many people. And so having a system that, that guarantees that all the sidewalks will be clear the same way we have a system that guarantees that all the roadways will be clear. Like, we don't do, we don't, we don't do this for roadways. We don't say every property owner, you know, needs to clear their own section of the roadway. So, so yeah, I really think the roadways and sidewalks need to be part of the same system and share the same priority level.
Can I share the letter on the screen over?
Yeah, you can.
I'm just. So just so people can see kind of, I mean, it's a so I guess, I guess what I love to do in our committee is, and we have, and this will be just today. It'll be like an ongoing process, but like, understand what the current policy is around snow removal and, and the prioritization of it and kind of look at, I've been doing readings about other cities. Rochester and Burlington are kind of standouts for really prioritizing pedestrian ways. Is there anyone else? Cause I wasn't sure if someone was here from Council on Aging as well, to speak on this.
Mary?
Hi, thank you. My name's Mary Morris and I am on the committee for the Friends of the COA. I agree with everything that's being said so far about the sidewalks, but the one thing that isn't being mentioned is an individual can clear their sidewalk, but if they live on a corner. So a lot of people do not clear that spot. So that if I'm walking along this cleared sidewalk, I get to the corner, I can't cross the street. If you understand what I'm saying, you know, right where the, they don't clear that where it's plowed. And I think that has to be included in the ordinance, because that is part, they're responsible for that. You know, and that's just, you can clean your sidewalk, but if you don't, if you're in the corner and you don't clean that, then no one's going to be able to get over. And that's where a lot of your injuries occur. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Consular Derby, before me saying anything, you want to say something?
Um, no, I'm, I'm happy to like hear what solutions are being proposed. I, I mean, I think this is, this is a great conversation. This is something that we've talked about in the past. And, and I have a feeling we'll come up against it again, just as we did in the past. But, you know, what this is going to, if, but what I heard was the solution, which was a comprehensive clearing of the streets and sidewalks and one fell swoop by the city. Fell swoop by the city. Um, you're gonna have to do a little work to figure out the financial implications of that.
And that, and that's why Greg is here. Um, I, I do agree with you a hundred percent. Cause all derby, um, is, 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 is a complicated. Uh, issue in our, in our community, right? Um, and this committee sent a letter. Uh, you remember we sent a, a, a letter to the school department a few years ago, because we have a concern about the safety of the kids. Because some of the sidewalk sidewalks wasn't, uh, proper, proper clean. And, uh, we have a concern that those kids are walking on the streets because of sidewalks. Uh, so this is a, this is a topic that is not that easy. Um, and that's why, uh, we invite, uh, Greg Mettman to, maybe he can give us an idea how, uh. Wha- what the city do and, uh, what the city can do with the money that we have in place to work on this. Cause all derby.
I just wanted to say before we move to Greg that, you know, um, cause I worked on this the last time we revised it. Um, so just a, like a little background, one of the reasons why we've recrafted the ordinance the way we did. Um, which was to have, uh, the DPW. At the time, we worked with the former DPW director to look at, uh, chronically under like, you know, properties that were chronically not cleared. Um, and so we put a piece in there about having the city clear those areas. Um, and you know, what we had found from, um, in our previous, uh, work on this. With the police chief, with the DPW was that the areas that were the worst were areas that were owned by, um, you know. Landlords that didn't live in the area. They owned buildings. They didn't live in the area. They didn't care if it got cleaned or not. And it was, you know, chronic, habitually not cleared. So I, I just wanted to give a little bit of. Kind of context to how it got crafted the way it did. And that was really, you know, obviously not an ideal solution, but it was what we came up with at the time.
Thank you. Greg?
Uh, well, I think if we were to start to try to apply the amount of resources and effort that we do to clearing the streets. To clearing all the sidewalks in town. I mean, it, my snow removal budget would probably have to go two to three times the size that it is at this point. So. It's kind of a question of, you know, where people want, you know, how much, how much funding the city wants to devote to that. And you know, what people want the tax rate to stay at and. Things we can, you know, we can do with what we have. I mean, I'm just sitting here thinking and to ruin my head, what it would take to apply the same effort. To the. Um, sidewalks as we do roads and, you know, thinking it probably. You know, five pieces, five or six pieces of equipment that are probably a hundred thousand dollars a piece with a. Person in it to operate it. That's probably averaging thirty dollars or so an hour. And then, I mean, it just snowballs into a, a, a huge expense. Um, think if there's, you know, areas that chronically need to be dealt with. You know, we maybe look at those and come up with a, a, a way of. Of, uh, you know, us looking at making them a priority, but, uh. It's definitely some, definitely a thing I think I need to do a little more research on.
Yeah, so, um, I'm wondering why, why, why is there never any kind of. Uh, lamentation about how we can't afford to plow the roadways and how that's too much of an expense. I mean, just why can't we just take the money we have and, and use it in an equitable way?
Well, if I start to taking resources away from plowing the roads, devoting them to sidewalks. The stats you talked that, you know, think of the stats Lindsay was talking about from Sweden. A lot of those stats are gonna change from someone slipping on the sidewalk to an accident with serious injuries occurring. On a roadway with a forty mile an hour speed limit that someone doesn't understand that just because they have four-wheel drive, doesn't mean they can't drive fifty when it's slippery. I mean, and it. Our, and you know, we have, we have to think about getting public safety apparatus down streets and, and keeping them open. I certainly can't. Take. Uh, a truck or staff member, a piece of a loader, piece of equipment off of. Roadway plowing to devote to sidewalks. In, when we, when, you know, one of our main focuses is keeping the roads passable for emergency vehicles.
So Derby.
Uh, I, I, I can defer to Lindsay, cause I see her, she didn't use them, the raise hand thing, but her hand has been up, so I, I can defer.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Lindsay.
Hi, I, I just feel like this conversation is getting ahead of itself a little bit, like it's. I, I mean, I think the first step is just understanding like how, like I don't know how, you know, like what. Like what the priorities are, like when a snow happens, like what, what's the priorities? Like what, how does, what is. Are any, and then what pedestrian ways are plowed, are any plowed and, and, and just. Obviously, like if we just went full on pedestrian, clearing all the pedestrians and it would, you know, we're, all of a sudden we think budget, but. Um, I'm gonna send to you, Greg, there's a study out of the University of Delaware. That's a whole comprehensive study on guidance for cities on, um. In, on, on this very topic and they have different innovative practices and guidance on how to prioritize. So I don't think it's like. A quick answer and obviously.
No, it's definitely not.
It's not, but I, I just, so I don't, I just, I wanna just caution our conversation to start, you know, feeling like road blocky already and start more thinking like. Like come from the frame of what can we do? What can we do? This is our, um. This is the money that we have. How do we keep our roads safe? How do we also attend to? Making sure people in our city have equitable access, making sure kids are, are safe walking to the bus stops, making sure seniors and people with disabilities and anyone. Is not gonna, you know, get injured on our sidewalks or not even be able to access our city. Um, is there an opportunity because of COVID and people walking more and staying local more? Is there an opportunity for ARCA funds in here somewhere to buy some maybe different kinds of equipment that we might be useful? I just. I, I would like to just come from a very open mindset and, um. And I know it's hard, cause you direct a budget and I, I, and you have to turn things into reality, Greg. So I'm not, that's not lost on me. But I just mean, I wanna have this conversation with a, like a real openness and, um, creative thinking.
Yeah, so a couple of things, I guess. Um, you know, so I, I'm gonna, I, I have to back up Greg a little bit in the fact that. You know, one of the biggest as stewards of the city in, in some respect, you know, we have to be thinking of liability. And it's a huge liability on multiple levels to prioritize sidewalks over roads as it relates to, um, you know. Speed vehicles that are, you know, thousands of pounds moving very quickly. Um, and, and roads that are unplowed as, as a danger to pedestrians, as a danger to other vehicles. Um, not to mention the fact that, uh, you know, ambulances, police. Fire need to have access to all parts of the city in order to deal with medical emergencies. That's a liability. Um, and that's, that's different than, you know, a pedestrian having access to be able to, you know, walk into town. Um, not that that's not important, it is. And, and that's where I think Lindsay, I agree with you, having a, a growth mindset here. Um, where we look at potential, um, safe routes to school money, where we look at potential, you know, even CPA money. You know, focusing on, you know, recreation, which that, that's a CPA thing, but saying, hey. Uh, people are not able to get out and walk if sidewalks aren't cleared. So maybe that's a loophole to find ways, you know, being creative, I think is important. But I also think being realistic is important and also, you know, finding pragmatic ways to deal with, and that's where we came back to the ordinance, the way we did. Which was, you know, people should be clearing their, their property. And if they don't, then they should be. Um, you know, either they could get help from the city if they are unable to clear their property and, uh, which would take some of the pressure off the city. Right? Or they should be fined and the city should clean it up anyway. Um, and, and you know, so it's, it's, this is not easy. And trust me, we've. Lamented over this for a, a long time, the last time we redid this. So, you know, um, just to put that out there.
Thank you. Lindsay, you wanna say something?
But I was just curious what pedestrian ways are cleared now in the city, by the city, any, like even downtown street?
Greg?
As far as sidewalks, I have a list. I might be able to bring it up here. I mean, we do the ones under our control that are like, if, you know, there's some sections on. Um, let me get, I just wanna give you the right information. Municipal sidewalks that we take care of. We are North Hampton Street on Route ten. From both sides of the road, from the highway department to the first driveway. West Street from Route ten to the top of the hill. Florence Road crosswalk crossing at lights and intersection of Florence Road and Route ten, Main Street, front of Town Hall. I mean, this goes on and on if you want me to read.
Can you, Greg, can you please send that list to the committee?
Yep, I can scan it and send it to you. I mean, it really keeps going and going, so.
Yeah, if you didn't share it, I'd be good. And also I was talking to the new, um, COA, um, director and she was saying that she got a notice that. Um, they're responsible for plowing the snow into their, into the building, but there's a snow blower there that they're supposed to do it. And she's, she, she just said, I was kinda looking around like, who on my staff is gonna be snow blowing? So.
Now, the snow blower that's there was donated.
Okay.
By, by someone and it's, it's been there for a long time. We have a contractor that takes care of the snow there.
Okay, so she doesn't do it?
No.
Okay. I was like, I don't think you're supposed to do it. I'll let her know a contractor does it.
What I, what I, what I see in, in this particular section, chapter, article three, division two is, uh. It's a complicated one. It's not an easy one to fix. Um, but we wanna be fair, right? And because we, we wanna be fair, it's gonna take time. Because we, we have to do the diligence to see how we can, uh, before with the disabilities and the senior community. I will, um, ask to Greg to, um. Do a research to see what we can do as a city, but at the same time, um, something that we can do. As, as a good neighbors is know your neighbor. If your neighbor are, are disabled or elderly, um, help. Um, uh, where we walking on this, um, this is, this is our community. It's everybody's community. And, um, a- again, even if I don't have a sidewalk in front of my house. Uh, sometimes I, I do the sidewalk for the school. So that way when the kids come, it's already done. So, um. I think we have to do our part while we are working on it, uh, because it is a complicated one. And, and, uh, this will be include money and we know the budget is, is tied. So it will take time. Yeah, Lindsay?
No, I was just saying, I, Counselor Derby, I appreciated your, already, you're always a creative thinker and I, I do like that idea. This thing of the bike path and how that's a big issue in the winter that we don't like. You know, people can't access it and then maybe that is CPA, that is recreation there. I don't know. Um, so that I'd like to.
One comment about the bike path though is, you know, Williston, I believe clears the section of it in town, in town here, a good section. And we get. You, we clear it for people to walk on it. You know, I don't really have a personal opinion on it, but we get. We clear it for people to walk and then we get complaints from the people that wanna use it's cross-country ski. So everything has its like. It's half and half. So.
I was just gonna say like, yeah, great. Clear the bike path. I don't get the cross-country ski down to center of town anymore, but we're just fine. I mean.
Or snow shoe and it's just everything has its.
Yeah. And so, and there's, there's compromises there too as well. You know, it's like, they, they can, they can clear a section of the bike path, half of it and leave half of it unplowed. For people that wanna cross-country ski and recreate on it, you know. So, um, but I think that's a good point. And sorry, sorry, Omar, you didn't call on me, but I'm talking anyway, so I hope it's okay.
That's good.
I, I think, you know, Williston is an organization in town that has more resources. Um, than your average, uh, you know, other institution in town. Um, and I would love to see them with the, the machinery that they have, because they clean all their sidewalks with specific machinery. It would be great. If they would step up and, and, you know, really, you know, they send us a letter every year telling us all the great things they do. Which a lot of them, they're not doing anymore because of COVID. You know, so maybe this is, maybe this is the year they step up and, and clear the, the park street all the way from Williston, all the way to the, the school. You know, um, it would be great to see them use that machinery in a way that really helps our community. And steps up as, as a giant institution with millions and millions of dollars that does not pay tax. So just putting that out there.
Thank you. Hey Greg, can I, um, ask you something? Can you please take a look if any other community, um, is. DPW is doing something with the sidewalks or something like that and how they're doing it?
Well, we use a contractor to do most of the city sidewalks.
And do you know, do you know if any other cities are doing it? Like, uh, they do the whole sidewalks or, or almost.
I don't know. I mean, most city ordinances that I know of. Yeah, are very similar to this.
Do you know if, do you know, and I'm sorry that throwing these, all these to you now. Uh, do you know if any of them have a waiver like, uh, for disability or, or, um, seniors? That they can do a wave and they don't get, uh, penalized because they're not doing it in front of their houses?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could, we could look, I could do some research on. I don't know of one, you know, off the top of my head, but. It's probably something that makes sense. I mean, we can, we can take care of them. You know, it's not, maybe not gonna happen right away after the storm, but if there is one that, you know, there's, we can. Try to get it taken care of.
Yeah, because it's, because it's, uh, if we know as a community and the city, we have a list of people with, uh, they, they have to fill a waiver. Uh, seniors and probably the same, uh, disability people. And then the, the city will know, um, the list. And like you said, it's gonna be at the end of cleaning everything, but, uh, at least we know. Uh, the police department will know that these people, uh, have waivers, so that way they don't have to plow the, the snow in front of their property. So, um. Then the city will can take care of it.
Yeah. Do you have any data available as to how many citations or, I don't know if you call them citations or penalties the police department has issued?
No, I know, I, I, I know they do. I can find out that information with the police department, but I know they do a few every year.
Yeah.
Another issue, which is of the sidewalk, is the people that allow their shrubs to grow. Into the, you know, and halfway into the sidewalk. This happens a lot over here downtown, these narrow sidewalks and. Kids, like they're trying to bike and they, you know, can't go up the sidewalk or wheelchairs can't make it through and I don't.
Yeah, I think, I think that's another.
It's another topic. Yeah, it's another topic, but, um. I don't, it's also like, uh. Public awareness culture about, it's not just about. You know, just taking it seriously. It's a town that we take it seriously that we can use our sidewalks.
And I will give her credit to DPW and the city, you know, of all the sidewalks that they're taking care of now, their ADA. Uh, complaint. So, um, I'm really happy with the, with the works that DPW is doing. Mary?
Thank you. Um. My one thing, this is really gonna be our first winter in East Hampton. Okay, we've relocated from Hoyok. So I'm speaking about my experience in Hoyok. A lot of senior citizens will go out who can, will go out and shovel their sidewalks with no issue. But what DPW, when they come, keep coming up and down the street. All that heavy snow that's now boulders, the snow goes back on the sidewalk and the seniors have a hard time with that. Those that are capable. Of shoveling have a hard time. I know I myself had a terrible time with that. You know, you just get your sidewalk nice and clean and all of a sudden the plow comes down and all the snow's back on your sidewalk. Okay, um. And I like your thoughts of neighbors helping neighbors that goes back a long way. And sometimes, you know. People just don't realize some neighbors are afraid to help others. Okay, but I think that is a good avenue. Another avenue, I don't know if you could look at and get me creative ways is using. The inmates in the jails. When I was working in Hoyok, they always, the inmates were always down there cleaning up the streets in the, um, spring, summer and fall. You know, another thing is maybe where for some elderly or senior citizens or disabled, um, a student from the high school. For community service. You know, there are different avenues that will not cost us money that we could look into. But, um. I know that seen, you know, a lot of seniors will do what they can. But if they're, again, very discouraged when their sidewalk then is plowed, plowed in again. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I mean, I, I think who, who does the work is not really the point. I think the point is who takes responsibility. I mean, some, you know, the town could take responsibility and get various people to do the work in various ways and. I, I don't think that's, that's that important.
So Derby, you wanna add something else or?
No.
No. No. So we're gonna keep it this in the agenda. We have some homework to do. And so that will keep working on it to see how we can be fair. With the disability and the senior community in our town with this order. Alright. Alright, let's move on. I'll take all the notes. I will send. Those emails to the police department. We're done with that. Now we have. The request by owner of the nineteen Womelco Way to review parking on that street. Is any I call consul sorry because this came from him. And he said that he will talk to the owner, that I guess is Kevin because he turned on the camera.
Yep.
Okay, that's before Kevin, any of the counselors know anything about this and want to make a comment or we're gonna let Kevin to talk first?
I think hearing from Kevin makes sense.
Perfect. Alright, Kevin?
Great, thank you. Yes, you may or may not know, we my partners and I recently completed a cannabis manufacturing facility at nineteen Womelco Way. And throughout construction and more so now that we're getting ready to open here and hopefully the next month, month and a half depending on the CCC, but. We've had a real parking issue on Womelco, specifically one tractor trailer, sometimes two. Apparently this has been going on for years, essentially use the street as their parking area. Excuse me, so the. Tractor trailer trucks owner and I'm not sure if they have friends or something or word got out. Live nearby and when sometimes it's. A few days at a pop, sometimes it's a couple of weeks. The trailer trucks essentially park on the street because there is no shoulder there. And it turns it into for some distance. A one-lane road and essentially makes it so you have to get into our. Into our parking lot to try to get by. It also eliminates parking, which for folks we we would love to have there is for the bike path, so. It's not a heavily used access from what we've seen over the past six, eight months there. But there is often one or two vehicles at the end. That will park to use the bike path. The trailer truck kind of makes it so that can't happen, so. Most of them just been parking in our lot for now. But what we'd really like to see because. It's it's difficult to tell on this sort of aerial view. But typically when they'll park, they actually take up about half of our parking lot and then half of what is. I think they're called Liberty Construction and I think the OS Concrete is in there, our neighbor. So you'll end up having to drive, even if it's there's only one car going down at a time, someone into those parking lots. And if there's two, somebody trying to leave and come, then forget it, it's. Somebody has to pull off and back up because. They just, there isn't room for two vehicles to pass there and we aren't even open yet. So I mean, when we open. And and. Even kind of early staffing around twenty people, something like that between the deliveries and vehicle count is going to increase. A decent amount from what there is now there. We're just afraid that it's it's not only a. An inconvenience for everybody, but it's it's also kind of a safety issue right there. So what we're requesting. And we had spoke to it with Owen several times and kind of walked the area. Originally, we were asking for sort of the end from. Our neighbor's parking lot to around the bike path to be no parking along if you're coming down it heading to the bike path to be the right side. Owen actually suggested that the whole street be no parking along that right side. To to eliminate that problem. So that's kind of.
Do you see, do you see the map now, right?
Yes.
So are you talking about all this section right here? I don't know if you can see the arrow like going.
At the bare minimum kind of from our neighbors.
Because this is the building that you own, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
So what you'll have now is it's it's actually not as big as it kind of looks here. What you'll have is from about if they park somewhere on the middle of our lot. They'll more or less extend to about the start of our neighbor's lot here. And you can see that grassy island. That ends up being point, yeah, where you really. I mean, you can get by, but you you can't get by with two vehicles and it's just. It really becomes kind of a a safety and quite honestly, it's rather unsightly that somehow a a tractor trailer has just decided to. To use the public road as its permanent parking spot. You know, I guess when that building was empty for years, it was less of an issue, but unfortunately now that that we're there, it's it's becoming kind of a problem.
Any of the council have any questions or comments? Council, Rothschild?
I'm just clarifying the trucks that are parking there, they don't have any businesses on the street.
One gentleman, so I've seen up to two. There's one in particular that lives on Main Street, maybe about. Four houses down from Womelco Way. I think, you know, we kind of had to ask them to stop parking. Well, we asked them to stop parking there. He told us no. We've had to essentially tell him he has to a couple of times because we couldn't have paved our lot. I know Greg's crew was out there putting in the new sewer line. He had to move through that because there was no access through the road, but. Dan Constantine was down there doing our fire inspection. He was parked and he kind of made comments like, boy, that's a tight squeeze if we got to get past here with a fire truck or a ladder truck. So it's it's really less than ideal situation and it eliminates any parking for the bike path for for folks and they end up just using our lot, which now, I mean, in theory, we have no issue with, but. There is going to come a time where our lot will be full and that that's those won't be available to people.
So Derby?
I mean, to me, this seems, you know, relatively straightforward. When the building was, because that building had been not been used for a very long time. And so, you know, someone took advantage of the fact that the road was being used. But it seems like as relates to, you know, what is going in there? It it makes a lot of sense to be able to get emergency vehicles there if we need to. And it it seems like this is a pretty straightforward request. That I think if this was a residential street, we wouldn't hesitate, you know, to do this in a second, so. I'm actually in favor of of moving forward with this request.
Also Rothschild, so you can.
Well, I'm just, I definitely. Pretty much supportive of this, especially the tractor trailers, but one of the things you mentioned, Kevin, was that. Because they're parking there, people can't park there to access the trails, so. My question is. If the, do you want, do you think it would be prudent to have no parking there or can we not allow tractor trailers to park there or? If there's no parking that there, do you welcome trail seekers to park in your lot or I'm just trying to figure out for people just trying to access the trails? I know it's not a lot of people, but.
I mean, the discussion that Owen I had had was, you know, we would be fine with say starting no parking and I'm not sure how you would do that because I think most of the no parking signs say like here to corner, but maybe Greg knows. But. Started say, you know, twelve feet back, so essentially you did have two spaces at the end of the bike path. But it also brought up the point and that's, you know, probably a question for you folks that. Do you want people parking at the end of the street? Because for us, our only access if there was a fire. Is onto the bike path for a fire truck or ladder truck. You cannot drive around, if you will, here and kind of, you know, this aerial view, the right side of that building. You can't actually drive there. That's you can't tell that's a big hill that's been remediated. That was part of. When it was the vermiculite factory. And so that's a massive hump. You couldn't get a fire truck around there. So what you'd have to do is have them drive from the end of the bike path. To drive on the bike path to reach the back of our building. So that was a question that came up as to whether the. City owners would want to just eliminate that and if folks have parking in our lot to access the bike path, excellent. You know, and if they don't, then, you know, they have to find a different kind of trailhead. Personally, I don't. Have an issue with somebody using a lot, but there will come a time where a lot is going to be. Full. And I will say that that use from what we see, I mean, I'm there pretty much every day for some period of the day. It's maybe one set of every three, four days, you'll see a car parked at the end. Most people who access that are. Come to find out actually parents parked at Hackworth, kind of walking down while their kids are there or. We see a lot of folks walking down that road to go walk to the bike path, but not a lot parking there.
So Kevin, as soon you guys open, are you expecting? Traffic all day? I'm not expecting a heavy traffic, but I expect it's gonna be traffic there. So it's gonna be traffic all day or how that's gonna work with as soon you guys open?
Originally, we will start with Monday through Friday from seven to four. But if things go well, it'll turn into a twenty-four seven operation. The the bulk of the large trucks that we'll have for deliveries, both of product leaving and products, you know. Boxes and we have a canning line and that sort of thing. Our deliveries coming in are gonna be Monday through Friday during the day. After hours, say second and third shifts and weekends will mainly be employees, so passenger vehicles coming through there.
So Derby?
I just wanted to clarify, if if correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but. This is going to be a manufacturing facility, so it's not actually going to be like consumer retail, right?
Correct. This isn't retail. It's manufacturing to start. We do have a cultivation license and approval. Our special permit is an approval for cultivation as well, but that was more of a phase two, but it is not open for retail.
So and so that means that you're gonna need to be able to have full access to your road in order to get your delivery trucks out as well.
Yeah, our primary delivery trucks for. Product coming in, which is things like cans and packaging and and such. We do because we do extraction there, you'll have. Gases, things like that being delivered will be on tractor trailers or trailer trucks, what they call it, pup trailer, like a, you know, a twenty-foot trailer. That's that's the bulk of our deliveries in. Coming out will be primarily in box trucks, things like that. But we, it will be tight with coming in with tractor trailers. I mean, that was one of our big concerns, but also, you know, fire truck access, things like that.
Thank you. Um, I mean, for a safety. Issues, I I think this. Makes sense. I don't have any. Problems making this stream, no parking from. Mainstream to the end. Lindsay?
Yeah, I guess without going there, I'm not prepared to do that. I'm prepared to to limit. To do it in a way that tractor trailers cannot park there. So I guess. I don't know if there's members of public or Hackworth that, you know, it's a whole road. I I just would like to see it before I would. Like I'm, you know, I come from New York City, so I'm I'm used to all sorts of parking. Parking restrictions and I was imagining, I haven't been there, but if there was like. If there was a place towards the end of the road. That it said only parking between these two signs and it could fit maybe like two cars, but no tractor trailers, like I don't want tractor trailers. I'm only totally on board, no tractor trailers on the street. But I think it is like if some people do access the trail there, like I get really frustrated around here by downtown when I try to go access a trail and. You know, reservation rule, they put parking near all the trailheads. So and if we're, you know, if because the tractor trailers are misbehaving or not misbehaving, but causing a nuisance, I'll say. Does that mean that no cars, there might be cars that go down there, you know, whether it's parents at Hackworth or whatnot. So is there a way we can create like a very limited parking that a tractor trailer wouldn't fit or just ban tractor trailers or? I'm just wondering if there's another scenario.
Right now with the the sewer work that was done, the road's in rough shape, so it's kind of hard to tell even how wide they're. Now hopefully. That's something that's addressed in the in the next year or so, but the. Other topic, but I I don't think that that road. And and Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, but really, regardless whether it's repaved, will really accommodate staying two lanes and having. Of parking on it, even with a passenger vehicle, you know, I'm not. Ace, but maybe Greg has a different feedback and and we are personally. We are concerned that if there's a fire there and there's a car at the end. You you can't get around. There's there's way to drive around that that building.
Yeah, we don't have much of right away there to to really carve out. Can I, if Omar, can I share my screen for a second? Actually, it's kind of.
Yes, you can.
So this is, can you see that? So here's the here's the issue. I mean, like like Kevin mentioned earlier, it has been an issue for for our staff and we need to work down there. We got tractor trailer unit parked here. And then you don't have, there's not a lot of real estate here that this is all property of. It used to be JP Stevens. What is it now? The Yankee Hill Machine Factory? And they've got it posted. The road kind of ends. There's no real definitive end of the roadway, no curb or anything, but. The other thing to keep in mind is there is parking at Coleman Road, which isn't too too far down, a few hundred yards down. From this location, but it this is, I just think it's kind of interesting that this truck is here so often. That it's on the, this is a Google Earth image. I didn't have this this. Take this or anything. This is just, I looked it up on Google Earth, Womelco Way. And and there you go. That's how often the truck is there, so.
And it just shows too that when people are in cooperative. That's when bans happen because maybe if he was like, oh, I'll park down there, you know, I don't know.
Well, and if you look at this photo, you can see from where the the grass ends to where the truck is. You know, you can see why he didn't park further up because it would obstruct access to the the driveways that were up there. But now this driveway that is right where Greg's cursor is, is going to be in use.
Sure.
So that that's why, you know, I think that's why this makes a lot of sense is because, you know, if that tractor trailer was up, you know, two hundred feet, it would be blocking both of those driveways. And the reason why he's not is because this driveway wasn't being used, but now this driveway is in use, so. And Greg, we don't. It's probably, I would say it's not very commonplace to have no parking signs to say no vehicles over this, like. You know, that's not a common thing, right?
No, this isn't an issue that we deal with in any other parts of town.
We dealt with it on Pleasant Street for a while, but that was more like we ended up being able to figure that out. It was a tractor trailer taking up multiple parking spots.
How about no blue tractor trailers?
Well, the other thing is Greg mentioned is a Coleman Street have a parking there. People can park there. It's really close to the. To here, so again, up to to me for safety reasons, it makes sense. But it's up to the other two counselors.
Just one other thing, you know, the the parents, you know, Hackworth does have a pretty robust parking lot. So I would say that, you know, we probably wouldn't be limiting. If we didn't have parking on the street, we probably wouldn't be impeding Hackworth's. Families at all. I know, I think they're they're parking in that parking.
And to add to the discussion, I'm pretty sure this require a public hearing. So I'm pretty sure this one, if we're gonna do that, require that, so. Probably the, I mean, anyways, we're gonna do it. If we're gonna do it. The public will have the opportunity to be in favor or against it if if that's the case. But I'm pretty sure they need a public hearing. So I'm I'm okay doing it. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm okay, especially if we're gonna have a public hearing.
I'm pretty sure I will say them, do you think they require probably here? I think so.
You know, honestly, that's testing me here a little bit and. I mean, we were gonna.
A long time, right?
We were gonna do parking and then we never really did it, so now I I can't remember because it's been a while since we did parking stuff, so.
But but if now we're gonna make a process, the people will be allowed to talk.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Alright, we'll take a motion.
I I would move to create a no parking area. On, oh God, I don't know what side of the street it's on, other than.
I'll I'll find out. Don't worry.
It'll be the south.
South.
South side from Route ten to the end of the road.
I will second that. We have a motion and a second and for the discussion, I see Lindsay want to say something.
The darkest question. So Matt on the other side of the road as well?
No, it's gonna be only one side because I think the other side will be.
Wouldn't it be a problem if the trailer, if he just went and parked on the other side of the street like?
He'd be blocking people's driveways right away, so.
Yeah, I don't think he'll fit anywhere because it.
Sorry, we have a motion and a second. You're not allowed to talk, Kevin, sorry. I mean, I can remove it, my second and you can remove. I'm sorry about that, Kevin.
Don't worry.
So so I guess there's not room for me and and I just want to be clear in the motion he made, you said for. So, so I guess there's not room for, and, and, and I just want to be clear in the motion he made, you said for an area. Did you want to say for the whole street or just for an area?
No, I said from, uh, Route ten to the end of the street.
Okay, so when, uh, when he was talking about the area, he was talking about if that was the south or north or.
Okay, thank you.
Greg, Greg, um, correct, it's going to be the south. So we have a motion and a second, we already have the discussion, uh, Consular Rochelle.
Yes.
Consular Derby?
Yes.
And I say, yes, so motion passes three to zero. I will take a look because I'm pretty sure, uh, I, I will call, uh, Barbara tomorrow. To, to be sure, if we need a public hearing, if we need a public hearing, we're going to set up for the next meeting in the next month. Okay?
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for coming. And now, um, um, Chief Norris, are you still there?
I am.
I, how, how long is going to be that?
I'll go quick.
Okay, because we only have up to six thirty.
I, I, you, I was going to say, I had, like, I ha, I actually have to leave, so I, I apologize.
Okay, that's fine.
And I apologize to other members of the committee, but I, I have to run, so, um.
Thank you, Salem, for being here.
Catch up on the video.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Omar, you all set with me too? I'm supposed, I need to get on a board of health meeting if I can.
Yes, we're, we're good, thank you, Greg.
Sorry, chief, have a good night, everyone.
Alright, thank you, Greg.
Yep.
Thank you, chief, it's your turn.
All right, let me, uh, share the screen here real quick to see if I can. All right, so if I did this properly, you should be looking at, um. Basically a graph showing some of our recent calls.
Yes.
So, so to start off with number one, um, thank you very much for taking the time to meet with me. I, I know Councilor Gomez, you and I spoke back in last spring. Just to do these quarterly updates, just to keep everyone in the loop and provide people the opportunity to ask questions about what's going on and fire any amounts. Um, just to open up that discussion right now, um, what you have in front of you is basically. A pie chart showing the breakdown of calls from July first, the beginning of this fiscal year through today. And when you look at the, um, chart down below, what you basically see in the breakdown is since July first, we've done. One thousand five hundred and thirty calls. And then of those, about seventy-nine percent, just over seventy-nine percent of those have been EMS related calls. Um, the ambulances have been extremely busy. Um, all three ambulance, we have three ambulances are all licensed to permanent level. Those are running non-stop pretty much every day. When you, if I scroll down on this chart, when you compare those numbers to last year's. Looking at the same timeframe, there's your comparison right there. Fifteen thirty this year to twelve eighty-six for that same timeframe last year. And again, you're still looking at that, about seventy-nine percent of the calls are EMS related. So the personnel have been extremely busy, um, in call volume in particular with EMS. Um, we're still, obviously as a reminder, we service the town of West Hampton. For all of their EMS calls via the contract, the city of East Hampton signed with them two years ago. That contract has been going well and we're providing mutual aid quite a bit, uh, lately to the town of Southampton also. Um, looking at just some more breakdown of the numbers, this one here, you can see at the top out of the, uh. Fifteen hundred and thirty calls, it has a breakdown, uh, one thousand two hundred and eleven are fire, are, are EMS related, three hundred nineteen are fire related. The mutual aid calls right in the middle of that page, you can see mutual aid and it says aid type, aid given or aid received, mutual, mutual aid. So we've given, we've provided mutual aid two hundred and thirty-four times since July first. And we've received mutual aid, um, twenty-one times. So certainly quite a bit more, some of that is skewed with the West Hampton contract because that gets classified as mutual aid. So if you, if you back out the West Hampton calls, right now we're about fifty-five calls and with West Hampton. And you back out of the two thirty-four, that will give you roughly the one hundred and eighty calls. That we provided to other communities that surround us.
And, uh, I'm trying, uh, wish communities are that, like how, which one is the farther, like really far away that we respond or?
The three most common ones we respond to in order are probably, uh, Southampton's number one mutual aid. Followed by Hoyoke, followed by Northampton. Those are the top three for mutually that we provide. And then coming in to provide us backup, Northampton certainly provides the most. Right under mutual aid, you can see the category overlapping calls. Uh, this one's always pretty interesting, um, thirty, just over thirty percent of our total call volume. We have concurrent overlapping calls. So what does that mean? We have a minimum of five people on duty all the time. So when an ambulance goes out with two people on it. Over thirty percent of the time, another call comes in that will require a minimum of two more people to respond. Leaving, uh, one person back here to cover the entire city for fire protection. Um, we're tracking more specific data in relation to that, but certainly that number, we're trying to monitor that and keep an eye on it. Um, we have a callback system in place to help offset that, to bring more people back. But that certainly is a, 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 a challenge going forward, uh, trying to manage the increase in call volume. Um, and then the last two categories there are just showing your response times. If you look in red for the averages, our average response time is seven. Seven minutes and thirty-six seconds. And our average turnout time from the time of dispatch to the time we're on the road is less than a minute. Both of those averages are well within the national standards for best practices. Um, EMS, look in, let me, uh, fix this view for you. Looking at EMS collections, uh, this one in front of you right now shows the collections from last year at this time. So last year we collected, I highlighted, um, in that third column under credits. We collected three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars at the same time last year. When you look at a comparison for this year, as I scroll down for FY twenty-two, we've collected three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. So we're eighty thousand dollars to the good in terms of collections for EMS. That's reflective of both the increase in call volume, which I mentioned earlier. And also the severity of calls that the personnel have been seeing. Um, whether you look at the severity of calls in terms of respiratory challenges, cardiac related issues. Um, we've had some pretty significant motor vehicle accidents lately, um, all of those contribute to, um. An increased, uh, bill into the insurance companies as well. So those are just some of the, uh. Numbers that you, we've seen since July. Let me stop sharing that for a minute. Be, before I kind of wind down just the updates, is there any questions on, uh, any of those numbers?
Yeah, I had a question because I, I understand that the numbers were down last year because of everyone locked in their houses. Is, is that, would you say our numbers this year are going back to like two thousand nineteen numbers or are they higher than two thousand nineteen?
Um, I, I think that's a very fair representation that we're starting to see that people are out and about more compared to last year. And we're starting to see those numbers not only meet the, um, benchmarks of two thousand nineteen, but are exceeding that as well. And, and then just to, um, kind of close a, a few things out, uh, the personnel have been doing a lot of, um, extracurricular activities. Um, we've had a couple of great vaccine clinics, we've worked with Bree and her staff on through the. Um, Health Department here in East Hampton, we just did two, um, vaccine clinics at the East Hampton High School with the school department. And the Health Department, we're looking at another one, uh, shortly in the upcoming weeks here. Um, we partnered recently with the Council on Agent with a smoke detector, carbon dioxide detector program. Uh, we have forty-six people signed up for new smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors. Uh, we, we're working with the Red Cross to get those funded for free and we're going to start that installation, installation process this Friday. Uh, so those are a couple of good outside, um, activities that the personnel are on taking here. In addition to their regular responsibilities. And then, um, the last thing I have is just in terms of some of the grants that we. Um, were awarded last year. Um, one of those was a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant for the ambulance. We use that to leverage a decrease in the overall cost of a second one. Both of those ambulances have been ordered. Um, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that those will be delivered here hopefully a year from now, but obviously that's. Um, that's going to be, uh, dependent on a lot of different variables. Um, based on shipping and other manufacturing parts and things of that nature. Um, and then the last one is other grants that are coming up that are due next Friday. A couple of the Homeland Security Grants on our capital plan, we have a new brush truck. So we're going to be applying for a new brush truck for a grant, that's going to be about twenty-five, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then also on our capital plan is a new cascade system and new air packs. Um, we're going to apply for a grant for those, those are also due next Friday, that will be around two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So we're going to give that our best shot, those are competitive grants, um, for departments across the entire country, but we'll give it our best shot and see what happens. And I'll stop there and answer any questions that there may be outstanding.
What's a brush truck?
So a brush truck, right now the fire department has basically, if you think of a pickup truck. With a tank on the back of it with three hundred gallons of water, with some different tools and equipment, so if we get a fire on Mount Tom. It provides, um, easier access to some of these remote areas out in the woods where you couldn't get an engine or a ladder truck. Um, maybe like the bike path, if, if someone, uh, had a lit cigarette down the bike path and threw it out in the woods. We can, uh, access these remote areas a lot easier with a brush truck.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I only have one request because we have three minutes. Before someone use this account and kick us out. Um, can you please send us all this information by, by emails, so that way we can include it, uh, to the minutes and the public will have access to it?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll do that right now when we get off this, uh, uh, Zoom meeting here.
Thank you, and apologies, the meeting was slow.
Never a problem, you, uh, you both know where to track me down and please, uh, reach out if you have any questions or concerns.
Perfect, thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
We'll make, uh. Uh, we'll second that because we went to the, uh, new business, old business, continuing business, so we already have everything, so. Consular Rochelle.
Yes.
And I say, yes, have a great night, everybody.
You too, Eli, have a great night.
Yeah, thank you, love, we've been here.